Okay, because you're not televised. This is not a televised session. Come on up, Owen Haxton.
Okay, my name is Owen Haxton. I live in 172. We're in Valley Drive, in the bottom of the course. And I would like to bring to the council's attention what I do wrong. To the council's attention, I have a meeting at the Margaret Todd Center this Thursday, January 21, at about 4:00 p.m. It's for citizens who are interested in the manner of governance in legislative bodies of Marin County, and would like to serve on regular grand jury, civil grand jury, from July of this year to June of next year. And I would urge a member of the city council to attend that meeting, because I believe it would be a significant indication of your interest. And I'm quite confident that you believe in grand jury. It's served in a lot of cities in the past, and I think it would do so again. And I thank you for your time and for listening.
Can you give us that date again?
January 21.
At what time and where?
4:00 p.m.
And where?
In Margaret Todd Center.
Great. Thank you very much. And I will announce it for you at the end of the council meeting. And that will be publicized, so if people are interested in hearing more about it, they can come to that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Julia Latimeri? Thank you very much for coming.
I'm here to set the stage for some speakers that are going to call me. We're a group that has come together over shared concern about the center platform design for the bus people. And we don't believe, as we're aiming for follow-up. And because we haven't been able to proactively, collaboratively work with the Marin Transit Design Review management, we've been doing our own investigations. And those investigations have revealed real risks with this platform design. You're going to hear some things that you've heard before. We hope that you're going to hear some things that you haven't heard before. But everything that you hear can be substantiated by the documentation that we have reviewed, including site design plans. You're going to hear things like pedestrians needing to cross in front of bus traffic, and counterintuitively having to look to the right rather than left. This is not how we were raised to cross the road. And I'm sure, Mr. Friday, you are teaching our boys to look left before stepping out in front of traffic. Not right. Once you reach the center platform, there are no trash cans. You can't get onto the Golden Gate Transit bus with open containers of food or drink. So passengers are going to have to go back across traffic to throw away trash or litter the platform. The platform itself increases the size of the existing platform by an alarming percentage. And it will indeed require the removal of four redwood trees, possibly five. The turn lane from Redwood onto Grant is shortened. We're no longer going to be able to exit McDonald's parking lot onto Redwood. And we're removing parking space from Redwood just at the time we're welcoming coffee wheels to town. None of this makes sense, especially when we put it into the context that this site expects no increase in ridership. This is not a commute bus stop. We do agree, though, that the existing bus stop needs a retrofit. But we feel the side platform design is a better solution. In 2010, a side platform design was developed by Marin Transit Consultants. And it did address every safety, ADA, and aesthetic design concern that were the goals of the project originally. And it occupied the existing footprint.
Julia, if you could wrap up your comments.
Yes, I promise.
Thank you.
Four sentences away. That design was prevented from moving through the design process. So we're asking you to put this back on the agenda for 2016, including public comment. And that the side platform design becomes a viable solution to a very much needed site improvement.
Thank you very much. Joe Robinson, and then David McLaughlin. And while they're coming up, I just wanted to remind folks that there's a three-minute limit. And there, I think, is a little clock. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Joe Robinson. I reside in Partridge Falls, too. And today, I'm substituting for Bob Rado over the last name, the name of K-10. So you can call me Bob if you want. So it's what Bob said. You have a facility that has functioned admirably for nearly 40 years. That is definitely in need of something upgraded. The current facility is safe. There have never been major accidents involving the site. Now we are confronted with a design that has never been used in a suburban environment, and one that drivers, bus drivers, believe will be less safe than the existing facility. Common sense tells us that this is a bad idea. The proposed new facility will be less safe than the existing facility. The merge lines onto Redwood will be much shorter. Southbound to Redwood emerges 165 feet less. And northbound is 140 feet less. Buses must cross over each other before both entering and exiting the facility. This design is not used in any other suburban environment. Bus drivers have cited many issues that are unsafe. Crisscrossing is very dangerous. And the center design has very unsafe entering and exiting issues, which creates a very risky and unsafe situation. But we also voted in the bus drivers. As proposed, committed against these safety issues, some of the following items are proposed. High-visibility crosswalks both northbound and southbound. This is common sense. New mid-block traffic signals in both directions on Redwood. Currently, I'm determined as to how these will work. This is being proposed to mitigate the fact that the new facility creates mass supply shortages. Given the fact that the new signal at Redwood and Olive was not installed correctly a couple of years ago, left turns across both directions of Redwood, confidence in getting this right is not high. This design is less safe, and should be considered. We're taking something that is not broken, deliberately breaking it, and then spending massive amounts of money to make something that will ultimately still be less safe. And that will be happened. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And David McLaughlin, followed by Martin Arnold.
Hello, my name is David McLaughlin. And I'm asking once again that we stop all forward progress on and include on this month's agenda revisiting the public and public discussion on the proposed bus facility. Here are a few compelling reasons involving traffic. The adopted design is 80% larger than the current design, with no increase in ridership. And so in that respect, there's an needless exercise and expenditure. There will be 5,000 square foot more of asphalt and concrete, which equates to 5,000 square foot less of trees and landscape. Again, for no voice purpose, and I told us why we need something this large or with this capacity. The left turn lane from Redwood to Grant will be shortened, mandating less vehicles in that lane. Appears to be 50% less in length, which will cause backup into the through lane, which will cause obstruction to the bus entering Redwood. One design shows two left turn lanes onto Grant from Redwood. So the center lane becomes a left turn lane, which will cause all through vehicles to merge into the slow lane. So in effect, Redwood Boulevard between DeLonge and Grant becomes a one-lane road. That will potentially cause backup all the way to DeLonge in commute hours, blocking both the crosswalk and the buses entering. Sounds like chaos. Installing a light at the crosswalk activated by bus drivers and pedestrians only multiplies the percentage chance of chaos, as this will definitely cause a backup into DeLonge on one side and into Grant on the other. Why were crosswalk lights not entertained? Well, maybe because the bus driver can't see the pedestrians or the cars when entering the facility, when exiting, entering the road from the facility. DeLonge and Redwood are now heavily impacted during commute hours, as is Nevada Boulevard. Drivers will be avoiding this area, and therefore clogging other intersections. I believe this is called unintended consequences. Every intersection where it makes sense. With a little foresight, I would try to take a roundabout at every intersection where it makes sense. Whenever you put a light in, you're guaranteeing that half the cars, half the time, will be sitting, idling, pouring exhaust into our atmosphere. And that's what you're doing by having to have a light. Finally, the most compelling reason in my mind is that this facility has never been presented to the citizens of Nevada, in spite of what you have written. Mark Thomas, President, 312013, had at the top of their list community consensus, which never happened. A paragraph on public outreach, which never happened. Three stakeholder review and comment meetings. And I consider public stakeholder. That never happened. Two public workshops. Those never happened.
David?
And one open house. And that never happened.
If you could wrap up your comments, that'd be great.
Okay. In closing, I would encourage Eric Lutkin, Misa Atos, and Josh Friday to recognize the compelling reasons for revisiting the decision. Thank you.
Mike Arnold, followed by Alvin. I wanted to remind folks that if you'd like to speak before the council of this session, please fill out a button card and give your share of yours. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you very much. I got into the bus transit project very late in the game. Others know far more than I do. But I was appalled at the August city council meeting and some of the claims made by consultants regarding the number of people using the Redwood and Grant bus pad. They said 1,000 people per day were using the pad on a typical weekday. Being familiar as I am with ridership statistics and how such numbers are manipulated and used to mislead decision-makers in the public, I required to find out. And just like with the SMARTS, various promotional claims about rail of ridership, there was nothing but estimates underlying the numbers. I thought to myself, come on, it's not that hard to station someone for a day or two at a single site and count the number of people loading and unloading. So that's what we did. We contacted, we were a record track request. We got the videotapes. The Nevada police, there's video in the site all day, every day. Al Dugan and I, we were a record track request that obtained the tapes for three weekdays, November 2nd, November 4th, and November 6th. And we proceeded to count the people loading and unloading from the many buses serving the site from early morning till late at night. So was the 1,000 number even close to what was counted? No. On three different days, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday last November, the average was under one half that figure. The count from Monday was under 400. No day was over 600. The consultants lie. No, they do what many of them do. A very flimsy estimate is produced in some report, in this case by Marin Transit years ago. Then the consultant cites evidence that is real. No one bothers to do due diligence. No one checks for the reasonableness of the estimate, despite its importance and simplicity of vetting it. And here they are, telling the city council a vastly inflated figure. And we're still not done. The SMART training is coming. While the agency counts ridership of its trainings, varied news reports is the statement that over 20% of the train riders are former bus riders that will use SMART instead of Golden Gate Transit. Indeed, Golden Gate Transit has stated on multiple occasions that SMART is likely to reduce the ridership on Route 7071. And when it does, it's going to cut back the schedules for further reducing ridership. Did I mention that many of the users on the bus pad are loading and unloading from 7071 buses? This means, of course, there's going to be even less people using the bus pad, not more. Was this discussed in August? No. Did anyone note the entire basis for the decision was built on guestimates? And no one was accounting for the reduction in use in the near future? No. I claim any eligible person in Nevada would consider this a compelling reason to revisit the prior council's approval on the project. Put it on the agenda. And don't just depend on our accounts. Hire some well-being in your interest to go sit in the pads, count the number of users by bus by hour. Confirm for yourselves that it's ridiculous to spend $4 million in such a facility, even when the funds are coming from the citizens.
Thank you very much.
I'm Al Dugan. Our group had a highly experienced landscape designer review the full-scale plan for the proposed center platform design for RGTIP. Common sense indicated this center platform design with extended bus weave lanes to accommodate this unsafe contraflow weave design would result in Redwood's tendency to come down. The landscape designer examined the plan sheet prepared by Mark Thomas dated 2014, number 310507017, received from Marin Transit in a Freedom of Information request, as well as completed onsite inspections to take measurements. The landscape designer has determined four redwoods will have to be removed. A fifth redwood may also have to be removed that has a double trunk and a circumference of 12 feet. These trees are heritage trees and have great aesthetic value for the entrance to the city of Nevada and downtown Nevada. The street name is Redwood. These trees that are estimated to be 40 to 50 years old and have trunk circumferences of 7 to 10 feet. The landscape designer also advised this critical point. Root systems of Redwood trees that grow in a grove like the ones we have in the island are massively intertwined. This difficult extraction of one or more of the trees out of a grove is very difficult, as it impacts the roots and structure and stability of all the other trees in the grove. Redwood trees also can absorb the more carbon than any tree on Earth. With our recent defining election, Nevada is now fortunate to have Josh Friday, whose day job is to improve the environment. Josh ran on an environmental platform working with our community. With his stewardship and understanding of the environment, I hope he finds the Redwood tree issue is a compelling reason to re-agendize the RGTIP. The 2010 approved renovation does not require any redwoods to be removed and meets all the regional transit needs of Nevada and the bus stop. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trish Borstky, and then Tina McMillan, and then Paula Neese.
Do you want to switch?
Oh, sure. Definitely. Honest, precious.
Was public engagement on the Redwood and Grant Transit improvement project fact or fiction? In April 2013, staff from Marin Transit hired Mark Thompson Associates to redesign the downtown Nevada Transit hub. In their original proposal for March 2013, Mark Thompson Company said the following. Public outreach and engagement are fundamental to the project and a critical component to allow for transparency, as well as garner public input. The community's vision and transit riders' needs must be reflected in the final hub design. Over the course of this project, community access to information and active participation in the project design somehow got sidelined, even though Circle Point, a public outreach and environmental planning company, was hired at a cost of $44,210 to promote, advertise, and conduct two public workshops and one open house. While consultants repeatedly state effective public outreach is a critical component of the downtown Nevada Transit hub project, we can't find examples of the proposed workshops or an open house. In fact, as the project progressed, the workshops were relabeled "public input", and the open houses disappeared. Mark Thompson Company also identified community consensus as an issue that could interfere with timely delivery. Their proposed solutions were to strategize a way to solve problems or avoid them altogether. Their top concern for Nevada was how to reach consensus on project design. It appears that consensus was reached by eliminating the public from the process. Our document research has led us to the conclusion that the public was not given an opportunity to weigh in on the platform design, because that design was chosen by the city manager and subsequently supported by transit directors Munkin and Wheeler. The city cannot substitute a technical advisory committee, a working group, and stakeholders for public input. All are essential to this project. Handing out a survey during a farmer's market and gathering comments on the open Nevada website is not sufficient public outreach for such an important transit project. On March 18, 2014, there was a city council meeting where Mark Thompson Company presented the center platform design. That meeting was attended by six members of the public, each of whom spoke out, announced questions, and described concerns.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Trish Borstky. I'm ready to continue where Tina left off. This included residents who made public records requests about this project in order to understand the details of the shift in the original side platform with bypass lane design to the hazards associated with the center platform design. Public workshops or outreach imply resident involvement, which include an exchange of ideas. And yet, none can be found. When the city had charrettes to update the general plan, they took pictures. They had handouts. There were question-and-answer sessions. There was a genuine attempt to inform as well as accept public input. In 2014, a community-based transportation plan happened at the same time that the RGTIP called for public workshops. The CBTP did outreach in the form of focus groups with direct feedback from residents. During open house, everyone was invited to view information and provide more feedback. Stakeholders were told a separate group was handling the bus stop. The CBTP was in the perfect position to ask residents direct questions about the Redwood and Grant bus stop. This was a missed opportunity. The RGTIP website says, "Get involved. Public outreach and engagement are fundamental to developing the design of the future transit stop. The project development process will integrate the community's vision and transit riders' needs so that they are reflected in the final design. Your input is important to us as we continue to improve transit in Marin County." exclamation mark. "The difference between the project's communication goals and the actual deliverables is vast and staggering. Feedback came from stakeholders, the technical advisory committee, and the working group. Why were members of the public excluded and discouraged from participating? Honoring transparency is already a part of the city council agenda for 2016. We deserve to have a conversation with our city. Please put this on the agenda for 2016." Trish Borstky, Tina McMillan. Thank you. Paula Neese. And Paula, before you speak, I would like to recognize your mom. And welcome her to the city council. Thank you very much. Nice to see you, Mrs. Neese. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Paula. Be welcome.
Happy to you, everyone. I agree with what everyone has said. I, as a resident of Nevada, though I have a particular interest in the bus drivers and the concern that they have a concern, over 100 bus drivers. So my idea and my appeal is that you revisit this project and you include the many bus drivers from Marin that have a concern about the safety with this project.
Thank you very much, Paula. Appreciate it. Tracy Neese. And then Jennifer Good, followed by Eleanor Sluse. And again, if you would like to speak before the council on the agenda, and Jennifer's sending a session here, please fill out a card and give your share of yours.
I'm speaking on the strategic plan. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's right. Strategic plan or significant items or whatever.
Oh, right. Good evening, council. I was looking over the strategic plan, and I wanted to make sure that the two projects are kind of on the radar, and they may already be, but I just wanted to verify. There are significant sidewalk gaps still in Nevada. And I don't know if those have been identified. I know we were successful this year in getting the Nava Drive sidewalk gap in front of Hamilton School remedy. But I still see a lot of people walking on the dangerous side of the road, especially on Route Boulevard, boats coming out of Landham Village trying to get to Nava Drive and other places in Nevada like Ignacio Boulevard. The other issue that I wanted to bring up as part of the strategic plan and see if that was also on the radar is crime reporting in Nevada. When I was an editor for Nevada Patch, in order to find out what the statistics were for any week of crime in Nevada, I would have to go down to the police station, request a book, you know, wait for that book to be delivered to me, go through. It was all redacted information. But I could see what were the statistics, where crime had occurred in Nevada, where is it safe, where is it not safe? You know, how do you need to protect the property? That kind of thing. But I noticed that other communities, when I would work in other communities like Fairfax, that information was available online, very accessible to the community. It could be as simple as a PDF that is redacted and just posted weekly. So I wanted to make sure that those two items were considered in this. I can just say it's a living document, since it covers from 2015 to 2018. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Jennifer Good, followed by Eleanor Sluse. Jennifer Good? Welcome, Jennifer, to see you. Happy to be here.
You, too. Happy to be here, everyone. First of all, what I wanted to say is I've been impressed just listening to the speakers in the audience, the residents. I think we have to feel very good that we have such a good group of residents that really care about the community. So I think it's wonderful. And I agree with the comments that were made about the transit center. I think that definitely needs to be revisited. And I think that there will be something wrong. If that doesn't get back on the agenda, it will be very wrong. But I actually came here to speak about an entry that is on for the February 23 process discussion. It's the Hamilton Sports Complex that's coming up. And I hope the city will take a fresh look at this project and learn from the many process mistakes that have been made thus far with this proposal. This poorly managed application has all the makings of putting the city and its residents in the same situation as what has happened with the Hamilton Solar Heartport project, which has obviously turned into a complete debacle, which has been acknowledged by everyone. Except this debacle would be on a much grander scale. It's something that the city cannot afford. This sports project should never have progressed to this point without a fair evaluation of whether the project even made sense for the proposed location. Because it's on publicly-owned property on top of a cap landfill adjacent a $300 million wetlands restoration area and next to many homes. Just because a developer has an idea for a project doesn't mean that the idea should always be encouraged and supported by the city manager and city staff, unless the proposal was a good fit for the location and the community. It's a project that the residents would welcome, and it benefits the city overall. And I would please urge you all to put the solar panel, let's add that to the agenda as well, in addition to the transit station. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Eleanor Sluse. And then my last card I have so far is Jennifer Robinson. So Eleanor?
Thank you. Happy to be here. Thank you, Eleanor Sluse. I have three items that I would like you to consider to put on the agendas. And they're important, because you see all the people behind you. People are interested in retaining and preserving Nevada as a rural suburban area. We have not voted for urbanization. The three items that we need to have is savings. A lot of money is being spent for reports A lot of money is being spent for reports for the bus station, which should be a bus stop, and I'll go into that in a little bit. It's about saving money and finances. We need to have a real discussion with the people who are paying the state, local, and federal monies. Five million, 30 million, 340 million. The second is that there are too many projects on the agenda. On February 2nd, when I have my appeal about the bus stop, station, transit facility, whatever you want to call them, that is right in line. You're having Plan Bay Area. Plan Bay Area is a whole workshop of hours. So there's something wrong with the way you're planning the agendas. Tonight, you have an overload of many different items that the people here want to talk about. The sports center, the plastic grass, the bus station, which are all important to those of us who live here, plus the train station depot, to spend money on that. The third item I want to talk about is CEQA. CEQA, with the, what I just read, which was amazing, exempts everything from the bus station. If it's called the bus station, transit facility, or the train station here, it means that within a half mile, you will be required to do whatever the developers want unless this group gets together and looks at zoning. So zoning has to be looked at. The heights, how high does Nevada want to build? Plus parking, parking is now an issue. It's a big issue, and will continue to be. So let's go back to savings. We need our roads repaired so there we can save money if we fix our roads. We can go smoothly down the highway, down the roads.
Paula Nar, if you could please wrap up.
Okay. And thank you so much. Please, and these items, it's about five of them, to the agendas. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hi.
Nice to see you. And did we have any other cards for this session?
Thank you. So I want to make a proposal to implement some sort of speed control on Redwood, so on Redwood and Ignacio, as we seem to have, which I've noticed lately because I've recently started walking my dogs, I've noticed is a major problem in a 25 mile an hour speed zone, and it's even hard to just cross the street. So recently, we've had two family pets run over, not mine, but neighbors, other neighbors complaining that they don't let their kids play in the front yards because they're scared. They don't even know what's gonna happen. Cars are going faster than 25, and it's a pretty scary problem. So I just want to make a proposal that we do something, whether it's a stop sign, some sort of radar speed signs, something to make other drivers aware. Because it's a pretty street that goes all the way over to Redwood, and I cross over to the Hollywood Boulevard, and a lot of people are just trying to get all the way over as fast as they can. And what we can do, so hopefully that message.
Thank you very much. Are there any other persons wishing to address the council during this pre-meeting of the agenda study and strategic plan? Seeing none, then I'll close and have a comment period and start from the last one going forward. Jennifer, I would like to have you turn around and meet Russ Thompson behind you. Russ, can you change, exchange contact information? Encourage you to talk to Russ about the speeding issue, and then we can follow up later in the week.
Okay.
And then relative to the sports complex on February 23rd, did you want to address that and give your overview of the agenda?
Okay, great.
And then Tracy asked about the strategic plan, which we'll talk about when we get to that point. Crime reporting in Nevada, is that something Kathy, you can get back?
Yeah, maybe Tracy and I can talk offline. There is, the city does have a crime reports online through crimereports.com, there's a link on our website. It's all mapped. You can look at different types of crimes, different areas, you can look at timelines. So we do have a very robust crime reporting online that's within the police department's website, so we can send that, send that link. So I believe we have the technology and the tool that you're looking for already.
It may not be a specific, but maybe that's something we can talk about later, too. And then, oh, next thing, I'll make that another announcement about the grant, and all the others were about the downtown bus station, and so we'll be talking about the agenda setting on the very next item. So Kathy, did you want to go through the agenda study and the strategic plan briefly in light of the time, and then I'll be asking council if they would like to add any items to the agenda.
Yes. Mary Eklund and council and county members, the item that is on our significant agenda item, I'm going to briefly go through just the larger, more significant, not every item. This is the planning tool we use because some things we think will happen a month from now and maybe six weeks from now, so the dates do shift based on our ability to kind of pull the information together and make sure it's ready to go to council. Mary Eklund, I will not, apologize, beginning of our cold, I will not be going through the strategic plan at this meeting. We started the process in the fall where we're doing that on a quarterly basis separate from this, because it really isn't, we discovered not a lot of time to kind of really do a more robust report on the strategic plan. So we will be doing that, I believe, in February or March as a separate item where we'll be able to talk in more detail. In terms of the items, it's going to be a busy 60 days. And on the 26th, some of the two key items I would pull out are that we will be having the actual consideration for direction and decision for the funding for a downtown Nevada Smart Station. Tonight's meeting, there was a work session on that, and then we'll be a decision by the council on direction on January 26th. In addition, council will have a conversation about noticing and public engagement. Council had a brief conversation about this in December, but they'll have a more thorough conversation and give us some feedback as staff and do some research and further outreach to the community on that topic. On the February 2nd meeting, as Ms. Sluse mentioned, there is an appeal. She has appealed the design recommission decision on the Redwood and Grant Transit Improvement Project, and that has been directly referred to the city council by council member Eklund, I'm sorry, council member Lukin. So that will be coming on February 2nd. Our plan also is to have a brief overview of our comprehensive annual financial report with our auditor, and then we do have a presentation by ABAG on the Plan Bay Area. I will say that there are a number of things on our agenda in January, February, that there are some time delays. We do try to balance the agenda, but at times, things need to be moved forward. And as I said at the very beginning, sometimes these items do shift based on when we're ready or other timing issues. On February 9th, there are potentially some conversations, and actions council needs to take on medical marijuana cultivation, et cetera. And then our finance manager will be bringing a conversation about our fiscal sustainability plan in light of the community's passage of Measure C and how that implicates kind of where we were in our overall plan and some interactions that council might want to consider. We want to have a meeting on February 16th, and then we will, actually, in the next few months, have a series of closed sessions also as we enter into labor negotiations with all of our employees. Our contracts are up at the end of June, so council needs to hear information from human resources staff. They'll deliberate and give us directions that then we can go into negotiations. We have tentatively scheduled for February 23rd the Hamilton Steel Process and Update for that project to bring it to the council. That will talk about a variety of things, an update to the community about assuming the applicant turns in an updated application, because we do not have that yet. It would be previewing the application, talking about a variety of issues related to the application, and a suggested process for council to consider moving forward. Again, we do have a developer that we need to go through a formal regulatory process that the city is required to do, and then there's also some options, because some of there's also, depending on what the application looks like, if there is a specific property, that adds some elements as well.
Kathy? It says here, Hamilton Fields Process Discussion. We're actually talking about the application that's being submitted by the Grant Sports Academy.
I am. Thank you.
So those that may know that I have MSA, that is the project that you're reviewing here.
It is. Thank you for that clarification there.
That's correct.
Then March 1st, we do have a work session scheduled tentatively to come back and talk to the council about noticing and public outreach, and then also March 8th to come back and talk about the general plan process as well. So those are, and then the end of March, some strategic plan update. So it's a very robust set of items coming forward through to the council in the next 60, 90 days.
Great, thank you very much. I'm going to start first with Eric. Do you have any questions on the agenda for the next couple of minutes, and is there any item that you'd like the council to consider?
I don't have any questions. I do have one item I'd like the council to consider. Do you want to bring those up now or later? So one, it's not a high priority item. It was one that I got some feedback from some residents about a couple of months ago with regards to shopping carts that we are seeing ending up around town in various places where they shouldn't be. So I did have some just very brief conversations with staff about model ordinances. I know other cities have been, and I would like to propose that sometime over this next year, we have a discussion to see if we want to enact a shopping cart ordinance to try to clean up some of those carts that just end up around town.
Great. I'm going to get all of them, and then we can go to the. My next person I wanted to ask is council member Erika Porten-Atis. Did you have any questions on the future agendas, or do you have any items that you'd like to bring forward? Not at this time. Thank you. I'd like to ask council member Andrew, do you have any questions on the agenda, or do you have any items that you'd like to bring forward?
Yes, I have a question about 126, whether to agendize noticing and public engagement discussion. Whenever you have March 1st following up on that, you have it listed as public outreach rather than public engagement. I think noticing and public engagement are two areas, a much broader area that needs to be addressed, public access and particularly the formatting of the agenda, low hanging fruit, easy things to correct with modest cost. So I would like to see those topics broadened to always, that we can simplify the ability to create the ability of the public to follow simply and easily the questions of the day.
And if I may interject here, and Kathy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the January 26th discussion was something that Mayor Porten and I had discussed with the staff. That is really an opportunity for us to, as a council, to scope out that whole issue of public outreach and public engagement. And so it's sort of like a two-step process that we just didn't want staff to come back in March without having us give some items that we think should be considered for that March 1st workshop. Kathy, did you want to elaborate?
I fairly agree with what you made, Mary Eklund. I think that the plan is on the 26th for council to provide a more refined scope of what do you want us to be looking at in engagement and community. And I think the purpose is not to do an active brainstorming in that meeting, but for example, there are some areas, we just want to make sure that we are really looking at the components that council is interested in. And then we will have further conversations, figure out how to get feedback from the community as well. As I mentioned a couple of meetings ago, we are doing some research to look at what are, in particular, the noticing requirements that other communities have, so we can kind of compare results. And then we're also looking at some other best practices. You are right, I believe, in council member Drew, this is a very large topic, and so I think it's going to be important for us to hear what does council want us to look at, and it may be that this is a series of phased things in terms of staff's capacity, and there may be some easier things in the blends, some midterm and some long term. But I think the work session in early March that we're talking about will let us frame some of those issues, provide some ideas to council, and then I think there's going to be kind of additional refining as we move forward. So I believe you, I believe you would be able to put that in and have that part of the conversation on the 26th as part of this meeting.
Okay, thank you. And I'd love to see, add to the agenda revisiting the question of the downtown bus stop, including side.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Okay. Council member Josh Friday? Do you have any questions on the agenda, or any items that you want to bring forward?
No questions and no items.
Okay. There are a couple of items that I would like to bring forward for discussion. First of all, I really think it's important for the council to have a discussion about the Brown Act and closed sessions. The reason is, as I stated at December 8th, that the Brown Act provides for the legal guidance for when the council can legally be allowed to meet behind closed doors. And I believe that the city needs to be stricter than the Brown Act, and the council, I believe, needs to look at how we conduct our closed sessions and whether they should be recorded or not in case there's ever a challenge as to whether the closed session was appropriate or not. So it's, and it would engage the public. I've heard now twice as staff say that planning commission members and design community members come out and attend community meetings about issues that's going to be coming before them, and I believe that that is not a correct reading of the Brown Act. So I really think that it's important for the council to have that discussion. In talking with Jeff Walters, he agreed, especially since we have two new council members, that it would be helpful for us to have that public discussion and also to engage the public, to have the public have better understanding about closed sessions and what are the Brown Act requirements and the noticing and that sort of thing. The other, the question I had on the general plan is that, is that an opportunity for us to revisit the issues that may have had a minority vote? Or is that something that we need to do before that discussion?
I believe the plan is to bring forward a process and an update, and again, we will bring options. So if there are some particular areas that council feels strongly that they would like to have, and maybe that there's a component or two or an area or two that you want to have further conversation, that is within what council could do to say, we'd like to have a further conversation, maybe on this piece.
And that would be appropriate to do on March 8th?
Yes. And you, you know, we are looking at having a draft document that we really want to get a lot of community engagement and input on, but if there are, if there's an aspect that council wants to look at, the place to do that would be then.
Right, because we basically have a new council now, and so, so the 8th is the time where anybody who has issues can report.
Yeah, at this point now, there is a, we've not spent a lot of time with staff working this one through yet, so those were some preliminary thoughts.
Okay, great. As long as we can do, I don't have to ask that we agendize that issue. I guess the other item that I wanted to bring forward was, I think that the, we're going to be doing duty assignments later on tonight, I think that the council should have a discussion about whether or not people who serve on the different committees should have an expectation of bringing back the issues to the full council before they vote on it, and that's another item that I'd like the council to consider. So now we need to discuss whether or not we're going to agendize some of these issues. I'll first start with shopping carts. Can I have a show of the council members who would like to have a discussion about shopping carts in a while? Please, I just say yes or no in the microphone, and I'll start with, this time I'll start with Josh Friday.
Yes.
And Andrew?
No.
And Denise Atis?
Yes.
And Eric Lukin?
Yes.
Okay. And I just say yes and all that as well, so I think that that's an interesting topic. The next issue is the downtown bus stop, and I'll first start with Denise Atis.
My response also is no. I appreciate the passing of residents, and I'm more than invited to meet with people individually, but I think we have thoroughly vetted this at the council level and we need to move forward.
No, Eric, no.
Okay. Public comment is closed. Josh Friday?
My answer is, is no, and I would do look forward to working with everyone that's come here tonight and who hasn't come here tonight to figure out how we improve our public engagement.
How are you gonna save the redwood trees?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, but public comment is closed. I suggest that people express their opinion via email or phone calls to council members or any other way that they want to. Pam Andrew?
Yes.
And I would say yes, so it's a 3-2. The other issue is the discussion about the Brown Act in the closed session. We'll start out with Pam Andrew this time.
Yes.
Go to Josh Friday.
Yes.
Denise Sappas.
Yes.
Eric Lukin?
I find that my only suggestion would be whether or not it could be included as a part of our, the scoping session we're gonna have on January 16th with regards to agendizing noticing and public engagement, because there's definitely some public engagement piece of that. I don't think it needs to be taken as a completely separate item.
Okay, so I'll put you down as a no and a yes, and so that's a full one. The other issue is having some discussion with the council as to whether we provide guidance and direction to council members who serve on JPAs that may be voting on things that may, JPAs, I'm sorry, joint powers authorities like the transportation authority of REN, Green Energy, even ABAC, you know, those kind of joint powers authorities to, you know, find some direction and guidance to council members that may be voting on those. I'll start with Denise Sappas.
We don't discuss this, so we've had this discussion before, no.
Okay. And Josh Friday?
Yes.
And Pam Andrew?
Yes.
And Eric Lukin?
I believe we have a good process in place for representatives on our boards and committees. I don't think that we need to revisit it.
Okay. And it's a no and it's a yes, so it's a 3-2. So it looks like we've got the shopping cart issue, we've got the closed session and Brown Act, and we've got the guidance on joint powers authorities, the bus stop downtown. So with that then, I want to thank everybody for coming.